Okay. All right, we'll put it on the record. All right, let's go ahead and get started here. Welcome to the September 13, 2010 work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No votes will be taken on work session items. Tonight there are four items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk's staff. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. And I just want to, okay, it looks like we found some public comment cards. So if there's anybody here that needs a public comment card, we've got some here. Okay, so I'm gonna start out and let the city manager slash clerk call the first item.
Be happy to. Tonight we've got a discussion on proposed approval to amend RZ 10-0 for the City of Milton zoning ordinance to create a required distance for convenience stores and service stations from residential use. Zoning districts within Northwest Fulton Overlay and State Route 9 overlay districts, Chapter 64, Division 5 and Chapter 64, Division 6. And I'll turn this one over to Robin in just a second, but I'll let you know that this was an item that was deferred back at a prior work session, as you remember. We also heard that night of a process by which text amendments would route through and having approved that that night and this not having been through that process. We pulled it that night and it did go through the process. I can tell you, as the process exists today, this was one, probably our last one, that since this was requested or partially council member driven, the thing this one didn't get was a work session to see if a majority of the council wanted to support this before it went through. It did proceed through the process, has been to the planning commission. It was in first presentation at the last meeting. We'll discuss it tonight and then potentially take some action, whether it's support or in opposition of it next Monday night at the council meeting. So I'll turn it over to Robin, that just kind of gives you a history.
Okay. Good evening, council and mayor. Just wanted, I'll go through this memo. I won't go through every bit of it, but just want to take the highlights of it. First of all, we looked at some other surrounding jurisdictions and their required setbacks, Snellville, Roswell, Cherokee County, Forsyth County. Basically, we saw there were two different ways that they handled it. One would be use permits or two overlay district requirements. It is staff's opinion that for the City of Milton, adding a distance requirement to the overlay districts, State Route 9 and Northwest Fulton, which would cover the entire city, would be the most prudent manner to enforce distance requirements. In addition, one jurisdiction is different from another and the same restrictions may result in unintended consequences. Therefore, staff has made the following analysis regarding convenience stores and service stations. Just want to review with you what our current definitions are in our zoning ordinance. A, for convenience store, one means a use offering a limited variety of groceries, household goods, and personal care items always in association with the dispensing of motor fuels as an accessory use. Two, does not include vehicle service, maintenance, and repair. B, service station, means a use which provides for the sale of motor vehicle fuels and automotive accessories and which may provide minor repair and maintenance services. A service station shall be limited to four or fewer bays excluding no more than one attached or detached bay for washing cars. So typically, what we see here in the city and our surrounding areas are convenience stores. It's the old-fashioned service station with service base, the reference to the service station definition. So just going through what is permitted, convenience stores and service stations are permitted within C1, C2, M1A, M1, and M2. There are no M2 or M1A zoning here in the City of Milton. There is approximately 11 acres of M1, some of, most of which are developed with other buildings. Typically, those M1s were unconditional because they were old zonings. Staff notes further that for sites on four acres or less, this is a 50-foot wide undisturbed buffer and a 10-foot improvement setback shall be located adjacent to all AG1 zoning districts and all property zones used or developed for residential uses. For sites on more than four acres, a 75-foot wide undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback shall be located adjacent to all AG1 zoning districts and all property zones used or developed for residential uses. So these are what the current requirements are for commercial or non-residential uses, including churches, schools, et cetera, are required adjacent to residential uses. The vast majority of parcels along State Route 9 abuts AG1 or residential uses and therefore would be required to provide the undisturbed buffers, reducing the developable area of a parcel. And just historically, under Fulton County, the majority of parcels commercially rezoned in the 1980s and 90s with conditional zoning excluded service stations and also exclude convenience stores with gas pumps after the 1990s. The City of Milton has excluded convenience stores with gas pumps since its incorporation in 2006 when there have been requests for any type of non-residential zoning. Although most jurisdictions use the proposed building to measure outward to the adjacent properties, it is staff's opinion that to be consistent and to predict future development, distances should be measured from the subject property line to the adjacent property line. Parcels that are zoned NYX, mixed use, that are located adjacent to a proposed convenience store should be measured to the location of the sole residential use. Typically, the non-residential portion of the mix will have a separate ownership from the residential portion. There may be instances in the Crab Apple and Birmingham crossroads area where a residential use and a non-residential use are within one building. In this situation, these types of mixed uses would be considered residential. The first map that you have before you attached illustrates the parcels that are currently permitted by zoning for a gas station or convenience store. Many of these parcels, in reality, are already too small for development. I want to show the first map. Implementing the overlay district buffers would further restrict their ability to be developed. Most of these parcels are unconditional C1 parcels that were assigned at the time of the creation of the Fulton County zoning resolution slash map in 1955. So you see, many of them are out in the hinterland and they're just basically not really very developable to be a gas station once you incur the overlay district standards of at least 50 feet. I do want to point out to you, there are a couple more additional parcels around State Route 9 corridor that was on on the previous map from your first reading. I don't know if you looked at that map, but if you look just where the square of the boxes on the west side, there's an additional M1 that was zoned in 1969 with no conditions. It's on the west side of 9. That is a potential one currently. There's also one to the south, south of Bethany Bend and 9. It's a commercial shopping center that was zoned in 86. It does exclude service stations, but not convenience stores. So there are some zonings out there even along the corridor that specifically say no, no service stations, but it doesn't exclude convenience store. And it's staff's opinion to be safe that, you know, we can't really do much about that, but that is a little loophole that we've discovered with the definition of those two types of uses. So by incurring an additional 100-foot setback from adjacent residential uses, that would basically exclude those uses and those parcels, even though it does not exclude a gas station or a convenience store. The second map attached illustrates the available parcels that meet the 100-foot setback for all non-residential and agricultural uses. Requirement eliminates all but six parcels that could be developed as gas stations, service stations. Five of the parcels are located in the Walmart Shopping Center in undeveloped out parcels. The six parcels located at the southernmost part of the city along the north side of State Route 9 adjacent to the city limits of Alpharetta. And that one is a little iffy. I mean, it's very close to the 100-foot requirement, but I just threw it in just for your information because I can't exactly know. It looks like it's very close to the 100-foot. I will note that after speaking to the Deerfield Development people and their covenants, they do not allow any more gas stations to be developed within the Deerfield Development. So basically, not by our rules, but by the covenants, it would exclude any of those parcels within the Walmart Shopping Center. At the August 24th planning commission meeting, there was one speaker present in support of staff's recommendation to require separation of convenience store gas stations from residential and agriculturally zoned properties. In addition, comments were read into the record and that is also attached at the end of this memo. After further discussion, the planning commission unanimously recommended that the proposed text amendment be approved with adding, quote, "separation from other uses," unquote, as a new subsection of 64-1145 in the Northwest Fulton Overlay section and inserting the new language under separation from other uses instead of setbacks. This change is reflected in the text amendment that's in your packet for next week. Our recommendation is that all convenience stores and service stations should be located a minimum of 100 feet from the subject property line to any agricultural or residentially zoned district within the State Route 9 and Northwest Fulton Overlay districts. Staff notes that the Northwest Fulton Overlay District also dictates the development standards for the Crab Apple and Birmingham crossroads overlay districts where these overlays are silent. With alternatives, the mayor and city council may request a measurement be made from proposed buildings and accessory structures as other jurisdictions have done, or the distance can be increased with staff's recommendation. In addition, if the council would prefer to include the distance requirement for only the Northwest Fulton Overlay District, more parcels would be permitted to be developed as convenience stores or service stations within the State Route 9 Overlay District, but eliminate the unconditional C1 parcels in the Northwest Fulton Overlay District. So that concludes staff's analysis and I'd be happy to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Okay. I think, just clarification, which you said just a minute ago, these other jurisdictions, looks like their 100 feet is measured from a underground storage tank or a building structure, not necessarily the property line of a gas station versus a residential property. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Ms. McDonald? Bill?
Let me be clear. When we're talking about a minimum of 100 feet, is that actually from the structure itself to a residential property?
No, it's from the property line. That's what we're proposing.
That's what isn't proposed here, but what I was clarifying, that these other jurisdictions, it is, it's 100 feet from the structure, not the property.
Why is staff proposing 100 feet from the property line when it doesn't appear to be an industry standard?
Well, as mentioned in the memo, basically, that, you know, we can't just take what other people do, but to look to see what would be appropriate for our jurisdiction. And just through the analysis, by measuring it from a building or from an underground storage tank, you're really not going to get much more than what we already require for a buffer as far as trying to separate the residential from the gas station. For instance, in Cherokee County, in their overlay district, they require 400 foot. I mean, we could do that, we could increase the number and measure it from the middle and that would be more, a safer process to do it that way, but it was just, we felt like that this was in between the 400 and then just measuring from a building or underground storage because it's very difficult to determine where they're going to place the gas station. For instance, the piece of property that is located south of Bethany Bend and 9, south of the other piece that we have, you all had voted on, it's a shopping center. But we don't know exactly where on that eight or nine acre piece it's going to be located, so we felt like it was easier to determine, you know, the future of a development by using the property lines instead of the structure.
And also legally, just to clarify, the proposed convenience store that's been before us, H squared or D squared or whatever, would not be impacted by this because it had already been submitted. You know, I just want to say, and I certainly commend council member and/or council members that brought this forward and I understand and I think, you know, when you look at it and it sounds reasonable when you talk about 100 feet, but I think the maps really put it in perspective. My personal opinion is, not that I want to have more gas stations in Milton if we don't need them or next door to anybody, but effectively what I see that we're doing, if we were to pass this, since the Deerfield area does not allow them in their covenants, we're really allowing possibly one convenience store, whatever, in the city limits of Milton. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it's, there's the one on the south and yes, just the one on the southern.
And so my personal opinion is, while, like I said, I'm not necessarily looking to want to see gas stations or convenience stores everywhere, I don't think it's right that, you know, we're sitting here make, would make a decision going forward that just eliminate, basically eliminating a whole industry citywide. So that's my opinion, but I'll open it up to others that have questions or want to speak on this.
Yeah, I mean, the issue that I think needs to be addressed as part of this is one of safety. I mean, the thing that was apparent to me and other issues that we've looked at is that there is no concept of where a commercial property such as a convenience store or a service station could be located with regards to residential property, and I thought that was a mistake. And so the reason I would be interested in seeing this move forward is because it helps provide for the safety of our citizens and I think that's a good thing.
Well?
Thanks, Mayor. And I would, I would agree with Councilmember Longoria. I think, you know, for the very reason, and I do, I do acknowledge and understand your comments, Mayor, but for the very reason that we have that issue where when we start to provide this level of analysis to where these convenience stores and gas pumps will be located in conjunction to residential and we do end up with that number of parcels that are, you know, would be excluded from it, is the very reason why we think, I think we need to move forward for safety reasons, that we do have a large number of parcels that could be potentially developed as a convenience store or gas station in close proximity to residential. So I'd be in favor of moving forward.
Karen?
I think if safety is our issue, this doesn't take care of it. Doing it from property line to property line is just a guise, you know. If you're really concerned about safety, then you do it from where the tanks are or where something else is to where residential houses are, not property line to property line. You know, we talk about wanting to be business friendly here in Milton and, you know, this is going to make sure that we have no more gas stations whatsoever in the City of Milton and, you know, we may not need anymore, but we don't know what we're going to do on the Arnold Mill corridor yet. We don't know for sure what's going to happen in Crab Apple yet. If that gas station ends up going away, if there's another place that is a better place for a gas station there. I just hate making a blanket rule under the guise of safety that really, because it's from property line to property line, it's not a safety thing, without looking at the specifics of what we're trying to accomplish and what it's going to do to us long-term. So as it is currently written, I could not support it from property line to property line absolutely because I just, like I said, I think it's, we're fooling ourselves if we think we're trying to, if we're doing it for safety reasons. If we're doing it for safety reasons, you do it from where the gas station itself is physically located, not from property line to property line.
Okay. Anybody else? Julie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to the point about property line to property line, I think I heard you, Robin, mention that in Cherokee, they, they do use a different measurement approach, but the distance is greater than the 100 feet.
Correct.
And so I think we need to be clear that the 100 feet wouldn't apply if we were to change the measurement property to property. It sounds like some other jurisdictions that have similar sorts of residential areas may have chosen a different measurement, but that it's four times the distance. So, I mean, I think that whether you do it property line to property line or if you do it 400 feet from the building and/or a tank, you're effectively accomplishing the same thing. It's just a function of how you define that, but effectively it becomes apples to apples as long as you modify that measurement tool. To me, the two things that are at issue are, one, safety, as well as an appropriate buffer for certain higher intensity uses next to residential. And I think that we are a unique community that does have some blended residential that are bumping up against some of these commercial corridors and I think we have to grapple with, how do we create a buffer that's appropriate for certain uses that are more intense? And this sort of a, an approach doesn't preclude business, it just says that in some places, certain uses are perhaps not as appropriate if they're going to bump up next to residences. I think to ignore that issue, we're doing a disservice to our citizens. So I think we've got to come up with a resolution that allows us to more appropriately place certain of these uses. I think the mayor made a good point, this would not apply to a current case that's before us. I would like to point out, Robin, and it may be that my glasses aren't strong enough, but up in the Birmingham area, I do believe that the red that's noted that that actually is part of the zoning that took place subsequent to the actual overlay, and I think in that actual zoning, it does prohibit certain of these uses already. So I just make that as a footnote. So again, what it speaks to is that it's, that this sort of language wouldn't preclude some things, because some of those things are already handled with specific zonings. And I guess just another question would be, even in those quarters like Highway 140 where we haven't yet grappled with what that neighborhood node is going to be, I think that we are already hearing from citizens and have that they want to see if there's going to be a commercial node, that we still have appropriate and adequate buffers so that we still maintain that residential flavor. So I think that's true on Highway 9, I think it's true on 140. Obviously, the folks in Crab Apples, we look at a master plan, I think we've heard from them historically. I think to do nothing is perhaps not the decision that would best suit our citizens.
And if I could just have a comment to Karen and a little bit into Julie's comment about the 140 corridor, I think we could always, when there's a master plan done for the 140, there can be a subset of a overlay district to address how are we going to do the commercial, just as Councilwoman, Councilwoman Sonora Bailey had stated. So I think it doesn't preclude 140 from ever having a gas station. That'll just be grappled with once we get to that point to do the...
But if our zoning ordinance prohibits it, the overlay has to adhere to the zoning ordinance.
Well, this, we're contemplating it to be in the overlay district and that's why we chose not to put it in the zoning ordinance under C1 so that if there is a subset to northwest for the corridor of 140, we can make an exception and do whatever it ends up, you know, the results of that study is.
Would we take the Arnold Mill out of the Northwest Fulton Overlay? Because currently it's in the Northwest Fulton Overlay, so currently it would apply to this.
Only when it's silent. It's basically a subset, just as, we could either do it two ways. We could do it like Highway 9 where it's a totally separate overlay, or you could do it as another subset. But if it's something, or there's, if it tends to be more intensive, then I, it'd probably be better to go with a whole separate overlay like Highway 9. And then you could dictate what you felt, or the study would dictate what would be appropriate and how that would be developed in the plan. So that's why we put it in the overlay district, so we just didn't restrict it overall, that we could deal with it on the overlay district level.
And that's similar to how the Birmingham and Crab Apple master plan. So we would, effectively, we could have a 140 master plan, just as we're going to have an enhanced 1, I'm sorry, Highway 9 master plan. It could then grapple with that and say, well, in certain of those locations where it might be appropriate, how could you then, how could you provide for a use but still protect the buffers of those residences, which I think we want to continue to promote. I think that that's, you know, we'd like to see an opportunity for citizens and businesses to coexist in a way that benefits both of them.
Okay. Bill?
Maybe further on the point of Highway 140 and think about future rezonings up through there. And if we apply these standards to 140, how do they apply to contiguous residential areas in the City of Roswell?
Well, basically, it's out of jurisdiction.
Right.
That would be an issue, I believe. I'm not sure what traditionally do it.
It's the old what's good for the goose theory. I think there are some points of unintended consequences that go along with this. And to Karen's point there, I'd be cautious about applying some blanket ordinance that one size fits all out there, but I'm sure you can deal with these exceptions and craft something that's probably going to allow variances in the future.
Well, like anything in the zoning ordinance, a variance could be requested to vary that distance to the overlay district. So it's not that, you're not allowed to ask for a variance. It's...
But you have to have a hardship and I don't, I mean, I don't know what your hardship would be. In order to get a variance in Milton, you have to have a hardship. We made that very clear and I don't know what your hardship would possibly be.
Well, it might, it might go back to what you were saying before. I mean, you can meet the harmony and maybe they set the tanks back on the property even behind the physical buildings that are located on the property. I don't, you know, I don't know what all this...
I'm just, you know, and I certainly respect everybody's outlook on this and position. You know, again, I go back and to me, it looks just like a, like we're trying to go in and eliminate all future gas stations by default. And again, if you look at this map, I think there are certain areas that you would never want to see a gas station, whatever, and there may be some that in the future may be a need or the market would drive that to citizens. I think we always have the option of, if there's an area that is not appropriate, we certainly don't have to, to grant that. So, you know, and I also think maybe we should go back, if we're going to do something like this, look at the way the other jurisdictions do with, from a building or from a storage tank or whatever, because there are instances where there may be a residential property where it comes to a point, and technically it's 100 feet, but the house is 300 feet away or whatever. And the only thing, you know, and I respect everybody's opinion about safety, but I don't know, is there anybody here that, and if you have children or family, that you won't drive into a gas station because you're worried about safety? I mean, I don't really get the safety, safety part.
I think that has to do more with if you're living there permanently. I mean, I think that was the issue that had been brought up historically, was, was the continual issue, because there's been some recent incidences where there's actually been explosions at gas stations. So I think that the reality of what we've experienced, not just locally, in the recent news, is that there had been some explosions, so I think, and obviously other council members can weigh in, but I don't think it's driving into the gas station as much as it is if I own a home.
If you're sitting there in explosion.
Well, of course, that's a risk. But I think the issue was, an issue of buffer to residences that are there 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
And that's a good point, and that's my point. You know, maybe it's like some of these other jurisdictions where, from the actual tanks, from the actual buildings, maybe we look at that, but I'm not really sure where we go from this point.
Yeah, well, I'd like to just weigh in on a couple of those comments real quick. And again, this is a work session, we're just airing this stuff out. So, but I would point out that safety comes in a lot of different guises. I mean, safety isn't just protecting somebody against something that blows up. Safety could be as subtle as protecting, you know, the groundwater from something that's happening and leaching into a property, a residential property where they rely on well water. Now, we don't have a lot of those instances here, but it's something that we should contemplate. The reason I'm interested in this change to the, to the ordinances is because we had citizens come in here and express their opinion very adamantly that they felt like they were out of control, that they had no control over what happens in their city because in 75 feet, they were going to be waking up every morning to, looking at a service station with all the traffic and everything else that that implies. And they felt like that something was wrong, that that could happen when they, you know, had been living there for 12 years and never contemplated the fact that a service station could pop up in their front yard. So I just looked at that and said, hey, something is sort of strange here. We ought to have some kind of a buffer area that surrounds, you know, high intensity uses such as a, as a service station. So the reason I'm interested in this is because our citizens are interested in this. I'm not interested in this for me because I live in the middle of Crooked Creek and this is never going to happen to me. But, but my job is to contemplate what other citizens are considering. So I think it's a good thing for us to talk about this for that reason alone. Now, if... Now, if, if we determine that it doesn't make any sense, or if that we're precluding, you know, businesses in a way that doesn't seem right, well, that's a decision we get to make, but I think it's a very worthwhile thing to discuss it.
And I totally agree. I mean, and I even said, even though, even if I voted different than the majority on that, that one service station, I certainly take it serious that citizens weigh in, and, you know, I wouldn't want a service station there. I think what jumps out at me, though, by changing the rules with the 100 feet, it goes from several locations to nine. If we were adjusting it, and say, it changed it from half as many, or whatever, but it's almost like intentionally, we're making a rule just to totally block convenience stores out. And again, I'll be the first to say, I have no desire to have any more convenience stores, or whatever, but again, if, if the market bears it, and, you know, the residents want it, and the property's zoned for it, then the property owners have the right to do that if it, if it, you know, if it fits into the zoning. So again, I just feel like, and Ken, maybe you can weigh in on that, it looks, you know, it looks like if we take this 100-foot rule, we're basically eliminated anybody from having the ability to put in a convenience store. You know, how would that be looked upon legally?
Well, the more you see this issue a lot, is that, you know, you're going to laugh at this, but you see these sorts of setback issues in the adult entertainment context, with these prohibitions on how close you can be to libraries, and daycares, and schools, and things of that nature. And those on file, and getting people in trouble because of First Amendment implications, that's considered some sort of speech. You're not going to have that problem here. There's no constitutional issue here that pertains to service stations and gas stations. Really, this is going to be more of a policy issue, and so long as your policy-based rationale is, is reasonable, and not an abusive discretion, you all have the right to legislate in this field. And again, this would go into the context of a lot of things we do, is whether we can do it legally is one answer, or whether we should do it is another answer. And what I'm telling you is, is in this context, the answer is you can do it. Whether you should do it is what you all have been debating, and I respect that, or all the arguments that's been made.
All right, thanks.
Mayor?
Yeah.
I think it, I think we do need to step back and look at this map a little bit, because as Councilmember Zoner Ray pointed out, the, the red parcel that's in Birmingham Crossroads has already been excluded.
Yeah, you can't, that's not allowed there.
If you look at the Highway 9 overlay, if Deerfield covenants don't allow for gas stations, then you can eliminate all the ones along Deerfield, all the ones along Highway 9, the one that's at the corner of Webb Road and Deerfield, we just potentially bought that last week, so that, I don't think we're going to sublease that to a gas station. And then the one that's on the north side of Birmingham, Bethany Bend and Highway 9, that is also, has a use restriction on that property to where it can't be a gas station or convenience store either. So really, the only one that you're talking about in the whole Highway 9 overlay is the one that this body considered a few months ago. So really, you're only talking about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, or 8. And we've already discussed the fact that the Arnold Mill overlay, should it become an overlay, can address this separately. And I would, you know, if you look at the other red dots on this map, I think it'd be hard for us to justify putting a gas station in any of those locations. I mean, you can see the density-
Yeah.
... of residential that's located very near all of these red parcels here on this map, that would ultimately become a gas station if we allow it.
And to be honest with you, that's my point. I don't think, I think we're, it's almost a moot point, even if we were to change this, it's not going to affect, affect it a whole lot, because some of these parcels, they're either, by default, they're out, or they're not practical, and would never be a gas station.
Well, I think it'd be interesting to see a map that has all the AG1 zoning, that could potentially convert to something other than AG1, and see how that impacts it, because the reality is, we're looking at the map the way it is today, and there's nothing that keeps the map the way it is today-
It may have, we may have.
... that way forever, so.
And I'm totally even, I've expressed my opinion, but if, you know, there's a new comp plan and whatnot, as things come out, if, if we look at it and there's red dots everywhere, you know, I certainly would take a different look at this, too. And I, you know, my opinion could be different then, too. But, you know, it sounds like we've got a couple of different sides here. I'm going to suggest, you know, we need to kind of have a consensus if we want to move forward on this or not. We're missing a council member, so we could either kind of try to find out with a show of hands now, if we have a direction one way or the other, or we can, could wait and just let, let everybody contact Chris via email or whatever, if, you know, if they want to move forward with this, or what do you think?
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
It's got to move forward.
It's coming, it's coming forward to us.
It's on the zoning agenda, it's got to move forward. At least it has to be called and then taken, and then some kind of action has to be taken, whether that's an action for deferral, for adoption, for denial, for tabling. Councilmember Longoria, you and I were, you said it, and I was thinking it, that, you know, one of the maps, and I don't know how easy it would be to get our hands on it, I think it would be fairly easy, we've got a pretty good GIS stat, to be able to look at those parcels that were large enough that weren't, that didn't currently have the zoning. And that's the key word on this first map, is that second word, which is currently. There potentially are assortment of locations throughout Milton that would meet the size requirements, et cetera, for convenience or service stations that just don't have the right underlying zoning today. And they could come in and petition for rezoning, obviously, and then that would fall back to you, as to if you approved it or not. Let me work and see if I can potentially round that map up, because that would be an interesting one to look at. But to your point, I mean, we can try to see if there's any kind of consensus tonight, but-
Well, you're right, it's got, it's coming forward anyway, so that'll kind of-
But if realistically, any of the other parcels would have to come before us to be rezoned, and at that time, we could condition them to not allow service stations, or-
You could.
Without any problem, correct?
Correct.
That, yeah.
So, so it almost seems like we're kind of doing a blanket thing, where we really could take care of it and actually look at the pieces individually, and rather than just, I hate to just make these blanket laws that we, you don't understand the full consequence, may not understand the full consequences of in the future.
I understand. And just, I guess in follow-up, and certainly not trying, I guess I'll play devil's advocate, since we're in a work session, and just kind of debating it. The, the one thing that by, if, if we were to have, and I'm not saying we should have, but if, as opposed to, you're right, you would have to look at each one, the thing it would cause is somebody who might potentially come with a petition for rezoning for a certain use, it might save them a whole lot of time, if they knew that, that's just something that the city's not going to allow there. I don't know. I don't know. I guess I'm, I go both ways on this one.
Well, if maybe you could get the, some more information to us, and then, you know, we'll have a open discussion about it with new information next week.
Would you need to do an AG1 as a function of the current land use map?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which may change in three different-
That's what I'd say, it may change, and we may, you know, we may have to look at this, if the whole outline is dotted, service stations and convenience stores, we certainly would tighten it up. And we, everybody might want to think about the way that other jurisdictions are measuring and front buildings and whatnot, we may want to adjust that if we want to move forward with that, so.
Robin, do you have an idea?
I don't want to interrupt. First of all, just doing the analysis, and we can get you a GIS map probably tomorrow by noon, that's not a big deal, they just turn on that layer, and that's not really a big deal to do that. My concern, I think, I agree with Councilmember Thurman, that it's up to your discretion and your policy to exclude gas stations and, and service stations, and whatever else you want to exclude. That's going to happen whenever any AG1 property comes up for rezoning, and the majority of the corridor at this point in time is either mixed use or commercial, and so it would permit it. And that's in part why we didn't include the AG1s, because we just assumed that if you didn't want it, you would say you don't want it. And then secondly, anything that fronts on Highway 9, it almost always backs up to a residential or AG1. So, just for information, so first, you're going to have the buffer requirement, either a 50 or 75-foot buffer that's already in the overlay district requirements. And then also, just thinking about the property line to property line, I think that maybe everybody would figure that out, and put all their gas station pumps and their buildings up to the 40-foot setback, and then get away from having, you know, that's why staff preferred the line to the property line to property line, because again, you can't predict, you can't really figure out, well, especially if you have a larger parcel, and smaller ones you can. But if you have an 8-acre parcel, they could stick it all the way to the front, and maybe there's still a 20-foot setback to the residential. So that was our kind of line of thought through the process, just for your information, not to, you know, tell you anything, but just that was our thought process.
Okay, one more, and then we'll move on to the next.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of recap a few things that I've heard. One, the planning commission supports what's before us unanimously, so there'll be seven people on the planning commission that support this proceeding, I think that's important. I think that the statements we've heard about policy, it is important, is that we are here as a policymaking entity to evaluate where are certain uses appropriate, and where are they less appropriate. And to Councilmember Longoria's point, we've heard from multitudes of citizens, not just along Highway 9, but historically, those that live over on the Arnold Mill area, where there have been some gas stations that were roughly, this is back when we were in Incorporated Fulton. And so I think that we do need to consider that. The other thing I'd point out is that for those areas that are red, on the internal areas that are maybe already C1, I think we could predict that we would have the same sort of citizen outcry that we've heard on others, that they don't believe that their residential AG1 area is reasonable for commercial uses of the intensity of a particular gas station. And I'll just point out at the end of Birmingham Road and Hopewell, I think we all could imagine that there would be lots of citizens that would say, you got to be kidding. And if it's currently a C1, if we don't pursue something of this nature, we're effectively saying that we're not going to establish a policy that makes it quite clear where certain uses are appropriate or not. I also am mindful, and I think that staff has put forward some sound rationale as to why the measurement of property line to property line is a reasonable consideration. If we were to look at any other measurement, I think we would want to look to those like Cherokee that have not 100 feet, because 100 feet, effectively, we've heard, wouldn't change anything. In that instance, we may as well not even proceed with this. So I think if we want to establish a policy that says, when is a certain use appropriate next to and immediately adjacent to residences, that sometimes we need to go ahead and establish those policies. And I think we continue to hear from citizens, and I would just say that I think it is analogous with what we've done and seen with adult bookstores, what we have heard from citizens about telecommunications facilities. There are certain uses that residences of Milton do not believe are appropriate next to their residences, and I think we need to heed that call.
And you know what, I'll just close it out by saying, you know, and just because I feel differently than some council members, that doesn't mean that I certainly would support a convenience store in each of these red areas. I mean, to Julie's point, there, there may be an application come up before us with some of these, and of course, the community's going to come out, and we're going to look at it and say, absolutely not, that's not an appropriate place.
But here's the difference, Mayor, is that we can't say absolutely not if it is an unconditioned C1. And today, some of these parcels are unconditioned C1. So we need to think ahead, and if we don't think ahead, we're going to be in the same situation that we found ourselves in, where we have an unconditioned C1 that has a right to a particular use based on residences that didn't used to be there, because we're in an environment now where we have to establish those policies in the instances when we have unconditioned C1. And I think that's why certain council members were concerned, is that they were anticipating that those sorts of uses would be brought, and there would be nothing legally that could be done unless we establish that policy clearly.
Staff, like for staff, to do one other thing, the parcels that are interior, that are the little red dots, they appear to be very, very, very tiny little red dots.
Right.
I'd like to see whether or not they're dots even that are big enough that they could possibly hold a service station with our current setbacks.
Right.
And for the record, I do go to gas stations, but I don't go to adult entertainment places. So they're, to me, they're not the same.
But what if they have gas stations?
They're not the same.
What if they have?
They're very different.
You can buy adult stuff.
I think so.
I don't go there.
Yeah, we can do that, that's no problem.
All right, well, we'll get staff clear, we'll get some more information, and we'll certainly be open to these same discussions with some more information next week. All right?
Excellent.
City manager, please, say on the next-
The next one is a discussion on a proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 58 Utilities of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances to establish commercial car wash, water recycling requirements for appealed conflicting provisions to provide for severability, to provide for an effective date, and for other purposes. This should be a very fast agenda item, this is one of those things that we had to put an ordinance in place, because the state law says we have to.
Well, that was my presentation.
Okay.
And I think we all finished on that one, thank you.
That was a very efficient presentation.
And, you know, there really is not a whole lot more to it than that. I'm passing out in front of you an executive summary that's from the Metro Northern Georgia Water Planning District, which of course, is one of the state authorities that does have jurisdiction authority over Fulton County and the city of Milton. You will see on the second page of that handout, you will see an action out under their water management plan, which is for a requirement for new car washes, car washing facilities to recycle water. And you will see that the subtask of that is for the local jurisdictions to enact ordinances to accomplish that task, which is exactly what we are now proposing that you do. The third page of that is our proposed ordinance, it is very short and sweet and to the point, and it would be a modification to the City of Milton code, and it would codify that effective January 1st of 2011, all new in-bay automatic car washes, being the ones you go in and park, and then they rub stuff over you, or-
Now, wait a minute, we're not talking about adult entertainment.
No, that's right. And also, the conveyor car washes, where you actually, your car is propelled through. Both of those would require the use of recycled water systems, which means, per the ordinance, a water system that captures and reuses water regardless of the source that was previously used in wash or rinse cycles. This is language the Northern District is happy with, it's modeled after their own model code for this function, and all we need is a general head nod from the city council, we can go ahead and put this on the first presentation, give the document.
Very interesting. Go ahead, Julie.
Just one question, Mayor. I heard January 1st, 2011.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm assuming that's the soonest that that would be reasonable, is there any reason to do it any sooner than that?
There's not, we're just trying to be compliant with the federal laws, with the set of regulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Is this, this is really an option? I mean, this is something we-
I don't think it is an option, Mr. Mayor, we need to do this.
Okay, I just want to be upfront, we need conflicts, because I have an investment, a part owner, and a small recycle, that manufactures recycles for car wash, so if I need to-
No, this is-
It's not, but in a different way, so.
This is nothing that originates-
Not in Milton, but-
From the council, this is something that originates from an authority out of the state.
Okay, if I need to.
Correct.
Go ahead, Bill.
Do we, do we know if there are any existing facilities that are described and fall under these definitions that do not recycle? I know of two here in-
We know, we know of two in Milton, and they both recycle.
Right. Both Cactus and Cades. Are those the only two, then?
What about the car washes that are at the gas stations like that?
We did one over here.
Yeah, those recycle.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if they, if they are in one of those, I can- In-bay or conveyor. But two of those.
But they would be grandfathered.
They would be grandfathered, that's correct.
Really?
There's one at both the Chevron and then the Exxon, I think it is over, there's one at both of those. I don't know if they're both functioning, but the facility's there.
So they wouldn't have to comply.
They would not have to retrofit.
But maybe just a, a comment would be that once this is enacted, or even before, maybe just as an educational element, and again, the cost of retrofitting might be too much, but if we could at least embrace those folks that are in Milton and say, did you know, and at least inquire as to whether or not they'd be willing to consider that, and maybe even over time, but just to help at least have that dialogue potentially.
I think the good news is the market, and people in that business, the market dictates that. It not only, it's an expense, but it also saves money over time, but it also is a good green business practice that-
Right.
-probably helps their business that they can advertise that we recycle versus if they don't, so. Go ahead, Bill.
If one of those businesses that does not currently comply is sold, what would happen in that case? Would they transfer the-
Right, so the grandfather would transfer it.
Unless they totally changed it, or something. Okay, Chris, you want to-
Yeah, that was more of a formality one.
Call the next guy.
Discussion of revision to road abandonment law and Milton's road privatization policy.
I'm not going to make Ken's presentation on this one. Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, let me begin by saying that, you know, we talked or had some dialogue about this topic, it's, it's been a while ago, perhaps a year or It's been a while ago, perhaps a year or more ago, with respect to the notion of abandoning certain streets within the city of Milton. And at that time, we had received some information that there might be a change in the law, but of course, we didn't know if there'd be a change in the law, but we were at least put on notice of a hint of that. And low and behold, there has been a change in the law. The General Assembly has enacted modifications to OCGA 3272, which is the portion of the Georgia code that dictates when and upon what circumstances both counties and municipalities can abandon parts of their road system. And you have in front of you, I think it's in your agenda packet, the language, and I just handed out another copy of it, although it looks like it was in your agenda packet anyway, and it's in blue. If you look at C, which is the one that pertains to portions of the municipal street system, you will see the language has now been added that is in the conjunctive. And what I mean by that is it says that a city may now abandon a portion of its street system upon two findings, and both of them can stand on their own. One is that the portion of the city street or of the city system has ceased to be used by the public to the extent that no substantial purpose is served by it. Of course, you are all very familiar with that. We discussed that intensively last year and know what that means. But now there's new language. Or that its removal from the municipal street system is otherwise in the best public interest. Okay, well, some of you have asked me, is that a significant or substantial difference or change in the law? And the answer is, it is. It is a significant change in the law, and it does not require a finding that there is a discontinuation of the use of the street or the portion of the street prior to abandonment. And obviously, the General Assembly and its enlightened wisdom knew what the standard had been, right? So we know they meant something different by the addition. And so they had in their minds collectively that a portion of the street system could still be used by the public and could still serve a substantial public purpose or benefit and still could be abandoned, so long as you, as the governing authority of the city, determines that it's in the best interest. The code that dictates, my opinion, the review standard would be 3632, which says that in situations where you're acting in the public interest, you have discretion, and so long as you exercise that discretion in good faith, your determinations will not be overridden. So basically, you would be judged based upon your review of this abandonment language, based upon an abusive discretion standard. And that abusive discretion standard would be, did you act in the best interest of the citizens of Milton? Now, if you're thinking that sounds terribly broad, it is. And that is going to be a reflection of the amount of power given to you in this area. You, as the governing authority, are deemed to know, within reason, what is in the best interest of the constituents you represent. Now, we need to juxtapose the new abandonment standard, which is quite broad, upon the city of Milton privatization policy. We talked about this last year. Remember, we talked about the fact that someone held their hand up and says, "Well, Ken, you know, our privatization policy states that so long as we have 100% buy-in of affected property owners that have property adjacent or that are otherwise affected by the abandonment, we can abandon, we can privatize that road," which is another way of saying we're abandoning, because the only way you can privatize a municipal road system or a road is to abandon it first, because we obviously have to take it out of the public road system. The answer to what I thought was a perceived thought of a conflict was, if the road serves a public interest, how could we abandon it or privatize it? And the answer was, if you have 100% buy-in of affected property owners, who is going to sue you, right? You've got 100% buy-in. Well, I will tell you now that in light of that, in light of the change of the law, I don't think we have to have 100% participation any longer. Now, I said, "I don't think we have to have 100% participation any longer." Could we keep the privatization policy in the city of Milton the same? Yes, of course we could. That's simply a policy decision. And there's a case, Raven County versus Mountain Creek Estates, which basically says that in the best interest vernacular, the policy you establish can in fact become the standard for what is the best interest. In other words, if you establish a policy, you're decreeing what has to be met for the best interest of the citizens to be served. So if you set a policy that's 100%, then a reviewing court will likely say, "Best interest is established by 100% buy-in." But what if you establish it less than 100%? Let's just say you establish it at 90, or 80, 70% buy-in before there can be a privatization or an abandonment. I think that would be lawful now. That is advice that is different than I gave to you last year, and the reason my advice is different is because the law has been changed. And I think it's been changed in a fairly significant way. So that's the kind of the friction we were running up against last year was that we had, first of all, a fairly rigorous state law on abandonment, and then we had a fairly rigorous privatization policy requiring 100% buy-in. To the extent, the question to me is, is are we now in a situation where if the council wanted to change its privatization policy, could you? You can. Should you? Kind of what we talked about earlier. That's up to you. But I do think lawfully, you can, and I think that so long as what the standard you decide to is not arbitrary or capricious and is in good faith, then I think you have the discretion to change the policy and give more flexibility on privatization and abandonment of these streets.
Ken, how does this, you know, last year, we are aware that we've had a lot of discussion in public, discussion on Crooked Creek.
Yes, sir.
And how does this affect the, with our existing policies, based on this new law, in that situation, how would that affect that?
I think the Crooked Creek situation is affected on two fronts. I mean, Crooked Creek, I'll just go ahead and say it out loud now, because the law has changed, and this is discussions, of course, that we have not held publicly necessarily. Which were two problems with Crooked Creek. One was, of course, we always were of the opinion that would never be a way for them to meet the privatization policy, which required 100%. I think that the Crooked Creek residents and citizens were very candid about that and felt that was a very difficult thing for them to meet. And secondly, I never felt comfortable telling you that I thought the road, I think it was Creed Club Drive, I remember, I never felt that the standard was met, that it no longer served a substantial public purpose. So there was two infirmities. First of all, with respect to Creed Club Drive, now the standard is from state law level, whether or not you think it's in the best interest of your citizens to abandon it. And again, I'm telling you, so long as you don't act in arbitrary or capricious or bad-faith manner, you've got a lot of flexibility on that. Now, right now, as the situation stands, right now, you still got a privatization policy problem. But again, that was a policy that made a whole lot of sense last year. Still may make good sense, but you have flexibility to change it if you want to. And once you change it, then that could give way to abandoning that road as well as others within your city system.
Mayor?
Karen?
What are we looking at trying to accomplish tonight, just to see whether or not we want to try to change the privatization policy, or if we do want to change it, what we want to change it, how we would want to change it? I guess I wasn't sure how far we wanted to go.
Looking for a couple of different things, obviously, as this law's changed. One, I'm interested, if there is any interest in changing. If there's no interest in changing, this is a real quick discussion, and we're done. If there's an interest in changing, then yes, I'd like to kind of get a high-level version of what you think it should be if it were to be less than 100%. And then, we don't necessarily have to pick a percent tonight, but let us, kind of give us a framework to work within, and then let us take it away and put together something and bring it back to you. I mean, we could probably sit here and debate this one all night, so we don't...
Under Karen's question, did we, I can't remember, had we been provided with, I'm sure we were, with other jurisdictions possibly of what their policies were, or...
I think we had some advantage, it was last year.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, do you think staff could kind of update? Because I'll just say, I'd be open to looking at a policy change. I'd like to, you know, see what some other reasonable policies are and maybe as guidelines.
Personally, I do not believe 100% policy is reasonable. I mean, I live in a gated subdivision, and we could not get 100% of the people in our subdivision to agree on anything, including keeping it gated. So I think 100% is not a reasonable number. You know, it's gotta be a supermajority. I don't think it can be just 50, just one, because people come and go, but at the same time, it clearly does not need to be 100%. Something to me, closer to two-thirds makes better sense, so...
You can get 100 people to agree on something, and 50% are gonna be mad. All right. Do you have any comments, Julie?
Probably maybe more a couple of comments or questions. One, just thank you for the update, because obviously, the change in law is a critical change. I would support looking into, you know, what we can do that's reasonable. A couple of questions, and I think the mayor already mentioned that we'd like an update on what other jurisdictions do, and I know that we've gotten some of that from Carter before. And then also, not only what have other jurisdictions done historically about the percentage for privatization, but also what are we seeing, if anything yet, with other jurisdictions in terms of how they might have modified that 100%?
And if I could respond to that, because she's alluding to something, just be ready for this. I would suspect that a lot of jurisdictions, forgive me, I would suspect what you've refined, a lot of jurisdictions have not even had time to respond to this yet. So we may be sort of at the forefront of looking at this.
Cutting edge.
Yes.
Cutting edge. And so presuming that we may not have some of that, at least some of that historical information would be helpful. Reflecting on some of our discussions, you know, historically, and obviously, we were confined by state law, in terms of questions that we've talked about before, but maybe we could also get an update, when we talk about affected residences, I know that that was one of those components that we needed to talk about, that we'll still need to try to grapple with, what does that mean? And I'm assuming that Carter is obviously gonna be a great resource for us. I know that you've had some input on that historically, Carter. And in this case, not talking just about Crooked Creek, but about any potential roadway. Another, Mayor, would be, I know we had talked at one point about different privatization policies depending on the size of a subdivision. Obviously, Crooked Creek is the largest, if not, you know, first or second. You know, how does that potential privatization shift when you go from a large subdivision down to one that may be a gravel road with only 50 people on it? You know, so some of those standards, I would hope that we would look at standards depending on subdivision and road type, because I don't know that everything's going to be appropriate for every type of road. The other would be, to Councilmember Thurman's point, obviously, you know, is it a supermajority? Is it, again, I think that that could vary with the type of road and also the type of subdivision, based on size. I know that we've also talked about within privatization, whether or not that would have to be by vote. Is it a vote of the HOA? Is it a vote of the residences? Again, it's gonna vary. A gravel road may not have an HOA. A subdivision would. So I just want to make sure that as we go through this, we think about how that varies, because the roadways vary and the use varies. Another thing that we talked about historically, and again, I surely don't have the answer, but I would hope that our staff could come back with some input as well as legal references. When assets are quote-unquote abandoned, and again, I'm gonna move away from, say, a Crooked Creek, I know there's some debate as to whether or not that was paid for or not paid for, but, you know, take a road that historically has always been outside of a subdivision. How do we handle the valuation of that particular asset? Because you've got probably two different camps. Some folks that would say that's a public road, others that would say it's not. So how do we handle the valuation when we start looking at abandonment? That may or may not be something that we have to grapple with when we're looking at the privatization, but my guess is it's one of those components.
That's gonna be handled still by state law. State law's gonna dictate what we have to as a matter of law, except...
It's on page two of the handout.
Yeah, so we're, in other words, because I think sometimes people have the perception that we can abandon with no consideration for value, and I don't, to your point, I think state law dictates some of that. So state law's changed in some places, and if you could just help us understand where we don't have the flexibility, as much as we'd like to have flexibility, sometimes our hands are tied just based on that state law. I think that...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Julie just touched on it briefly, too. And one of the points of discussion last year was the point of percentage of residents that community and/or those impacted by the abandoned... Take Crooked Creek, for example, and they lie right on the Forsyth County border. You know, what jurisdictions, what contiguous areas or adjoining areas or nearby areas would be, I guess, solicited in this process? I think that's a big point to consider, to discuss, and probably to research a little bit further. That's my...
General, Al?
Yeah, I just, I agree with everybody's assessment. I think that the, although I wasn't here last year, so I wasn't part of the council's discussion on this matter, I was part of the public's discussion on this matter. I think that the change in law is significant, and I think that we would be wise in addressing it, even if we are on the cutting edge, because I think we have plenty of citizens who are interested in our interpretation of this. I would also say that, as Julie and Bill pointed out, that there are things to consider, you know, how we gauge, you know, opinion, how do we, you know, get the opinion of the affected citizens? And I think that we've got some guidance from that recently in the traffic calming ordinance that we passed not too long ago with regards to understanding when citizens are being held up to a non-voluntary HOA and when they're, you know, maybe part of a voluntary HOA. So those, that kind of stuff, even though the percentages are gonna be completely different, I'm sure, I think that we've got some guidance, and it'd be good opportunity to get some more of our ordinances in line with that kind of language.
Mayor, and I think also the issue of what constitutes an affected homeowner or affected resident, I think that's also addressed by the traffic calming ordinance we just passed, too, so it might apply here, Mayor, and I assume it would. But I agree with everybody that went before me. I think we should look at it. I agree that 100% isn't really doable, but then again, I think it should be more than just a simple majority, so we have to find a good balance there. Most covenants are 67% to have these kind of things done, so I agree to move forward.
Okay. You got a feel for that?
Do you have a feel?
Yes.
I feel... Just be back before we... So anticipate the end of next month.
Okay. Thank you. Sound the next gentleman?
Yes, I will. This is the other formality of the evening. Discussion of an IGA between the city of Milton and Forsyth County for the Guinness Ferry Roadway Project. Ken Girard.
That's it, and the header about captures it as well, so he's stolen my thunder. Yeah, this is the IGA, we talked about it, you may recall in the context, meeting the conflict to be able to work on both sides of this agreement. And I have done that, and I've worked with Carter on behalf of the city of Milton and our folks up in Forsyth County. It's just a kind of an unusual thing, we're trying to do a foam-based, what, reclamation project on the common boundary between Forsyth County and the city of Milton, and the law, as Carter has painfully learned through me, and has been very tolerant of me, does not really do a good job of addressing these sorts of joint projects that should be so easy and make so much sense when jurisdictions would work together, but they don't. And unfortunately, in the realm of public works, particularly in road construction, you have to be very, very careful to make sure that you meet your competitive bid obligations under state law, lest all of us get in trouble. And so we worked real hard to make sure that we did that, and that's why we've come up with this IGA, that is basically gonna require both jurisdictions to have simultaneous legal ads or public notices soliciting bids and advertising. We're also gonna require the successful bidder to do a joint payment and performance bond, which is again, something nothing new to both our jurisdictions. But again, the advertising and the bidding are so essential to the public works law that we're insisting that both of those be satisfied in this context. And it's a little bit different, a little bit out of our comfort zone, but that's what we're doing, and I think we have successfully, are gonna have successfully satisfied state law such that we will not draw a challenge. The oversight of the work, and I believe that Carter is comfortable with this, will be overseen by Forsyth County, but obviously, subject to full scrutiny by the city of Milton with the ability to offer input and certainly to raise objections if they see any deviations from the scope of work. The participation financially will be 50, 50, 50% to 50% with a maximum cap by the city of Milton of $150,000. To the extent that there are change orders that encompass both sides, both the Milton side and the Forsyth County side, those will be split pursuant to agreement. To the extent that Forsyth County wants a change order that only implicates Forsyth County, then they will be responsible for all of that. Is that your understanding, Carter?
Yeah. Otherwise, that's it. This is not terribly complex. I don't think it needed to be terribly complex. You've got, I think, on both sides of this contract, two staffs that are terribly professional, and will be monitoring this very closely. The agreement, I think, captures and puts plugs in place the full amount of the city of Milton's financial liability, and by insisting that we're jointly bonded, both on payment and performance, that covers Milton as well.
The agreement, I think, captures and puts plugs in place the full amount of the City of Milton's financial liability, and by insisting that we're jointly bonded, both on payment and performance, that covers Milton as well. So my recommendation would be to put this on the next consent agenda.
Okay. Any questions? Go ahead.
I would just add one quick question. Is that as far as our standards for paving, are they the same for Forsyth County as it is for the City of Milton?
They're actually a little stricter in Forsyth, so...
We're going to go with Forsyth?
They're going to go with Forsyth.
That'll stay.
So this is advertised as one contract or two separate?
It will be advertised as one, yes, one contract, in both jurisdictions. That's so important, is they want the actual notice in both jurisdictions, and that's perceived to be, a lot of people have been like, this doesn't make much sense. And I will agree, it's clunky, but that's what we're doing.
We'll essentially run Forsyth County's ad, just directing anybody interested in the project to Forsyth County to pick up bid packages.
They're only going to be available in Forsyth County.
Right. Forsyth will essentially run the entire bid process for us.
Good. Are we sharing in that, Tom?
We, to the extent that we paid for our ad in our local paper, we are.
Okay. Any other? All right. Thank everybody for being here. Thank the public for being here. Thank our staff.
Come back. We like having the public amongst us.
You got a good one? All right. Spence said, quiet tonight without bird here.
I know.